It is seven o'clock, let's call the meeting of the Kingland County. Order. These are first.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Ms. Williams here, Mr. Rose.
President.
Mr. Harwick.
Here.
Mr. Holdroyd.
President.
Chairman Brown.
Here, I'm sorry, I went out of order, is any need for electronic participation? That's with that, so we've got the meeting agenda, a slim agenda here, my, my report, I'll maybe share a little bit about a conversation that Steve and I had with Go Virginia. And maybe we can tag him on it. Is there any, I didn't even like to add.
Mr. Chair, we don't talk any about the Commerce Park?
We're just going to propose a closed session. You know, when we will add their. Business. Business, what is Chris, business, same tune of a new business, perspective, new businesses.
Can you add that to decide on nine new business?
If it's a closed meeting, it would be. Number. Eleven, just before June.
Okay, let's do it now. Any other business that we'd like to consider? Is there an update on me, should we add an update on our, our pursuit for a director?
You could put that on your unfinished business if you like.
We'll do that as eight. Eight A, and then we'll be local business day will be okay. There are no other additions or suggestions, that is, any motions to approve the agenda as a minute?
Seven.
Sorry, any discussion? Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, we will pursue this agenda as written, we have seven minutes in front of us, thank you Chris for sending them around. For giving me for being absent. Were there any? Adjustments, corrections? And a motion to approve minutes? Go with.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Are there any opposed? Chris, we've never been to Joe Raychild, thank you so much for your help. All right, we have treasurer's report.
I don't think there's any changes last time, should we work through receipts, bills that they come in?
Just their capability for a farmer's market, just spur a lot designs, parting signs, parting sign.
Yeah, I saw that on the. That's been paid. A warning. It will be paid when the, when the checks run during the.
Okay, so that'll be a change in the next month. Paying that bill.
It's, it's been paid, it's just not reflected on that report yet, it hasn't.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Campbell? Appreciate the report.
Mr. Chairman, I guess maybe there's an addition, slight addition from the treasurer's report. E D A to ask that the board supervisors consider rolling over the F Y twenty-three budgets. The F Y twenty-four, that will be on their agenda on July the twenty-fourth. So if any of the members would like to be there and possibly speak to it. Can they?
Any comment or?
Ah, you can do it, well, or, we'll see if they have any questions, and if they do, I would make reference to whoever's happened to be there from the E D A. It would be good to maybe. Understand, understand what are we rolling, what are we, what are we using funds for, or what's the, the need? I think the farmer's market certainly is one because that would, that would bleed over into the spring when you may be preparing for next year. There's always additional funds needed for marketing and other things for that.
Sure.
Maybe it's like to be a little specific, I know they're just.
Patton, we also talked about using some of that funds for. Startup and travel expenses for our new director.
Well, F Y twenty-four is covered.
Okay.
Within reason. But yes, any additional funds certainly would be an asset, but that part of it is covered for, for next year. And then after that, we'd have, we'd rather see where, where we go.
All right, I, I would volunteer to be at the board meeting, but I'll be out until the twenty-fourth.
Well, if nobody can make it up.
I'm, I'm happy to come to speak to it, and that's kind of the other, in addition to the farmer's market, I think also preserving some, some of the resources to. We budgeted to provide a match to a business in the community to help it expand or do something, and I would think that that would be something we would like to continue to recruit business to do. So I think that's a viable opportunity to let them know that what we want is money for is to put in the community at the service of local businesses. If people are comfortable with me longer.
I won't be in town that evening, so I couldn't.
Well, you tell the board of supervisors, I'm going to come see them on July twenty-fourth, we're all going to have.
Well, keep in mind, this, this is not something that's aimed specifically to the E D A, it's an unusual request because all departments and agencies. Funds uncollected at the end of the year roll, roll back into the general fund, so it's just an exceptional request, and that's why there's scrutiny.
You just like to be thinking about that. All right, so you will be there?
I would be there.
All right, so. Anything else on the treasurer's report, anything about the line? Good. Thank you. So for the, for my report, I, I had an opportunity or, or a gentleman, Ian Ginger from Go Virginia Region Six, which is the. It's a part of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership or Initiative of it, they try to do some regional collaborative things, and they have a grant program where they will provide currently a two-to-one match for infrastructure investments that, for locality within. The region. Will initiate or, or push forward, so Steve and I had the opportunity, thank you Steve for setting it up. To talk to Ian, you know, at, at some level of length, at least in general, about potential opportunities that we have. One of the, the opportunities that this group had, that the. Region Six of Go Virginia identified for site improvements was the Commerce Park, that's part of the study that they had done across the entire region a number of years ago. So given some of the recent activity around the Commerce Park that we've entertained, it seemed like a good time to have that conversation with him. That program is available to us, not just for Commerce Park, but for potential other opportunities, if we want to do extenuities to a site or do other infrastructure type work. There are resources available where Go Virginia could provide a two-to-one match. The great benefit that we talked about is that we could have as much or as little inputs in the application process as we so desire, so. The Region Six people will write the application, should we actually come up with a project that is viable and could work. So it's just something I think that we should be aware of as we think about Commerce Park or other opportunities that are potentially at the fingertips. That if we truly want to get a site to be ready to go, actually make a site ready for it to come in and purchase or rent it. This seems like a terrific partnership and opportunity for us, did I misspeak?
No, I think, I think that pretty well summarizes it. As far as, say Commerce Park goes, would be a little bit different, just because the county or the E D A does not own any of it currently. But he said that's not really a challenge, it's just you gotta go a little bit different route. But it's, it's good for the smash, it's good for hard costs, it's also good for site characterization, and. It's, it's less about, okay, we've got a potential partner, let's make this ready for him, or. It's, I mean, it could be that, but you gotta write it such that it's really geared for, we're going to take a site from tier two to tier three.
And what is that distinction? What is tier two versus three?
Um, I'll have to look again, but B D P, Go Virginia, all these organizations, they go off on site characterization, tier two basically means it's.
Play role versus finish, is that?
Site, tier five is done, pad ready, shovel ready. Uh, tier two, I think, is maybe zoned appropriately.
I see.
And that's about it, so say we're looking at a different piece of property, it's pretty easy, they said for them to say, yeah, that's tier two, done. Got your stamp, for a tier three, they might have to do more engineering, you know, got that next level there, maybe it's got all the utilities that you want. Ready to go.
And the county or the E D A would need to own the property, is that?
Not necessarily, that's not necessarily, he said it may just go, it does make it easier.
Yeah, what about that, so. Public right of way, right, I mean, that would be, that, that's not individual ownership.
Well, we're still figuring out who's got the right of way.
Would you think that it's a dividend kind of our focus and what kind of what we want to get off the ground? There will be some changes, I think, to the program you mentioned, they'll go from a two-to-one match to a one-to-one match pretty soon. So, you know. It would, who was to, there, there is a waiver process where we could potentially get that.
You know, we might be able to, could qualify to go back to getting two-to-ones because we're rural and. Don't utilize it very much to have much opportunity, but still, you know, thousands of times guaranteed.
So that certainly an exciting opportunity is right in front of us, so we can proceed with urgency. There's no cap.
There wasn't a cap. Wow, and they've got a certain amount of money that they have to use, but specifically there.
Is it like tax credits where you score, should they score you?
They did not say what the process was for the criteria, I guess, of scoring, how much you get was. We didn't get into that.
Yeah, we did ask for a copy of the application.
Yeah, he's got it.
And the program manual that we come on. So when I get it on a certain floor, it's everybody, so we. The great thing about it, what I thought was that, you know, I just kind of asked, I asked for the manuals that we would figure out what assistance we would need and create an application, just kind of offered up.
There, there are no facts for what they get or coming, then you lose somebody else.
That's for sure.
Just, that's, yeah. Love that a lot.
So more to come. Moving on, unfinished, finished business. Update us on the director and then move into the local business roundtable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the authority. As you know, we've been seeking applications for quite a while since the initial interview were held, and there was no. Advocate that was recommended for hire out of that first round of interviews. Right now, we have one pending. I believe that was sent out by our H R department to the interview panel. And there hasn't been a consensus back that that application should be considered for. Interview. If they do, we will pull the group back together, and if not, we will continue to wait. Unless the authority feels differently from movement from a director to consulting services. Which, if you do that, then obviously you'd have to recommend that to the board supervisors and get their approval. But that's, that's where we are.
Question, Mr. Ashka, I know through the interview process, we talked with. The H R manager, and so when we post, run the Virginia system, where we, you know, make our postings. Have we found, or she maybe would be better answer this, when we take something down and repost it, does it kind of repopulate us up?
Yeah.
Because I know it probably has like a day ticker next to it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we do that, and they do that, they run, they run for a couple of months, and then they'll recycle for their last complete recycle. So yes, I believe economic development position, that we just. Or vote a plot for a. Facility director position as well, and they, I think they're all close to nil.
So, in, in your opinion, I mean, should we be getting more responses, and what would your expectation be? It seems like we've had some folks apply, but they just.
Well, traditionally, it's not an easy position to fill, because normally the salary is arranged that is. Is one of the higher positions within any, any government setting, it's not a, you know, it's not a small salary, and we obviously are below the average when it comes to that. And also. You know, it might be a difficult position for somebody to understand, that we don't. You know, we have a lot of markets, but if you have people that are, that are more used to, you know, more urban areas, for instance, and. They might find it a little more exciting to be in that kind of a setting. I don't know, we're, I think we've advertised well, we've advertised at all the right place, seeking a government experiments person. And obviously, we can even consider the private sector as well, with the previous interviews that we had. I just. I, I can't really explain why, sometimes you'll get the opportunistic applications for a position, another time you know months without utility directly directly as well. You have to wait months, sometimes to find that right fit, when you do, try to keep them. But I think salary drops this probably more than anything. That'd be my opinion.
That's driving force of all employment these days.
Especially if you're asking somebody to. For live pretty close by, even if they're not in the gallon. Where they can be accessible.
A comment was made, well, it was during the interviews, just like. The H R manager said that in the cycle of hiring, you know, there's different parts of the season, so if someone's trying to get their kids back into school or summertime, they're not wanting to start a new career. As someone maybe out of college, but we're looking for someone a little bit more experienced than just out of college, and, and I think we haven't come across people, the experienced folks wanting north of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they're good people, you know, they know what they're doing, but just the budget, it's not there, spend that.
We made one awful, I got. We had another one in mind, we were ready to bring him back, and then he accepted another job, so.
I would, I would recommend that we just keep it posted, and it just see who knows, maybe tomorrow is the day that someone relocating in Virginia that's in the business, I know when. You know, when I first came to the group about it, I think the director, Ashlyn, actually did it in New York State, by chance moved down to Virginia with family and concerned themselves in, so.
It's, it'll continue to be, until you tell us that was.
I agree that a couple of months, probably it'll be fine. Let's see where we are, what we get in fall.
Man, as a group, you know, we want to try to pick the right person, but you never know, we get, we could have tried to hire someone previously and they lasted a while, that's employment. But just keep our fingers crossed here, we aren't doing. It's a good county to work for, it's always gonna have a good time when they do it.
Just wonder if, and I know that we talked about this when we built the job description in the posting, but I wonder if, like, we're asking for too much responsibility for the salary that we're offering. Like, it's a lot, I would be intimidated by that.
Exactly. Well, it's a director's level position, and I think anybody that would assume that position would probably expect that kind of business, honestly. I think there was discussion that if we wanted to reduce the responsibilities, then we may not call it a director. It might be called something else, like a specialist, that, that term is pretty common in the economic development circle. And then your salary starts to conform with, with what the responsibility would be. That's an option to go and look at as well. And then that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that position, although that position would report to county admin anyway. It could have, it wouldn't have the level to where we would still have to provide a significant amount of, like, do it a lot, I'm sorry.
I think we should still shoot for what we're shooting for right now, because if we're talking about building, you know, a larger economic. Of course, in the future, we need a director first. And so, I think we should still try.
We have learned what helped for them. We're, we're kind of, we're doing it from bottom up, but it's just a matter of finding the person to do.
And this Williams, the, so we asked that same question in, in the interview process, this was after, and so when we drop down a tier, being that this is an entry-level employee. They just, we essentially have to offer the beginning of that tier, so a specialist was forties, I think, or a fifties, so it would likely be in the, like, right now, the director, what the, what's the name of the director?
Well. It, it's true, but it, but it also doesn't mean that things can't be adjusted if you find the right candidate in that, in that area. Because it is a new position, you, you have the opportunity to. I think what the H R director was, was looking at, is trying to be consistent with other. Mid-level position, so we have, we have flexibility. Firstly, since the E D A is involved, we have flexibility.
I would think that before we would make a shift to a different strategy, I think that some conversation with the existing county staff yourself, Mr. Hudson, who are currently charged or doing a lot of the, the work. To figure out. It's gonna be nice, it would be a luxury to have a director. Who can perform some more high-level activities, a lot more, so we're looking for, if we can't find that, and we have to go in a different direction, whether that's consulting or a specialist. What would be the thing that's most advantageous, given the work that, that the administrator and deputy administrator are currently doing, would have to continue to perform, so. Having some conversation about where is the most strategic addition to the existing input, so that we can then. Provide a service to the county and getting the right stuff done. In my mind, is the best approach, so whether that's a consultant working two days a week, or a specialist, or whatever we want to call it, any one of the pay bands within the county. We want to make sure that we're adding value to what ultimately we're trying to do.
I will say that I, I, I really believe that Steve and I are keeping up with, with what we're receiving and what we're able to recruit. What we're not doing, and we admit it honestly, that we are not making business to current businesses. We're not doing much of anything to. Get a pulse of that, and maybe the next agenda might help us lead, lead to that a little bit better. That's probably the biggest void. In our economic development strategy with, with us doing, otherwise. Every lead that we get, we're following up, we're discussing, we have some things that are starting to happen a little bit in the re, in the retail or a commercial area. We got some other things that we're excited to bring to you in a matter of months. That I think you're going to be very happy to, to get your arms around, it would be the kind of thing you've been looking to do for a long time. But. If, if we're still, and I believe we need to, we're still looking for somebody that can, that can be that person daily, or at least, at least weekly. Getting to know the business, feeling, feeling their, their pain, talking to them, encouraging them. You know, we have, we have a restaurant that just announced they were for sale, down in Central Garage. We jumped on it. And they, I think they were surprised that we reached out to them, because they've been open for, for a while, but they just. They just feel like they're shifting their family, their family position and nothing wrong with. Other than they just, they, they're just changing their, their life. So we hope that we can replace that spot with either something similar, or at least something that's really a good, a good fit down there. I can, I'll tell you probably, if you have no doubt, I'll tell you probably a really good one. Oh, that didn't, an announcement was. So anyway, that, I really believe, but to, but to the outside person, it may look like nothing's happened, but. There's a lot of good things happening, there really are. Takes time, you know, and I, again, I want to remind you how proud you should be. Of Nestle. And there, and everybody that was involved, and I know this, this body had as much to do with it as anybody. That is a huge investment in this county, and it continues to be a staple for us as we go out and talk to other people. Because if Nestle wants to be in business here, and West Rock sustains itself in business here. Then that's, that's something that they at least want to have a conversation with you, so we have something to build upon, we'll continue to do that. So we don't want to lose fact, lose sight of our victories, you know, even though we're always looking to the next one, that was a major one. And actually, they just had a big story that broke here in the last couple of weeks about, I think Steve was able to go to the, the celebration they had of the expansion. But we'll stay the course and keep you updated.
Any questions for the? Thanks, sir.
I was charged at the last meeting to look a little bit further into. Business roundtable concept and what that means, to the authority, to the county as a whole, and. I went back through some of my notes that I had in previous employment, it's really a very simple concept. We did ask the commissioner of the revenue to send us out a list of businesses, and I think she did that, I don't know, but. Everybody's had a chance to review it, it's been, was right up to your meeting. The recommendation, if you want to set up a roundtable, was that I would ask each of you to, to. Appoint or recommend new business. That would be fourteen, that would be a body of fourteen, which I think is a very manageable group of people, because you typically don't get a hundred percent every meeting. But you can get a dozen or so of, of just about every meeting, it's, it, it brings to a good discussion. We would, we would recommend you meet every other month, about my play. I don't give the work schedules, this is where it gets touchy, luncheon meetings are very good. But they're not always fitting into people's schedules. So if you have a luncheon meeting, then we certainly provide lunch, if not, then you would have an evening meeting. And we, we probably start around this hour, we'll start a little earlier, depending on, on your will and pleasure. And every time we met, we would give this group an update on economic development, on things that are happening in the county. We may have a guest speaker a, a time or two, you know, you might like a Go Virginia type of a rep, or a B D P type of person, or somebody that would come. They would kind of talk, talk the language of business, what's the climate, what's going on. And then we open it up to them, and allow each one of them to say things that they want to say. Comment on the business community, you know, you'll get some praise, you'll get some gripes, you'll get some suggestions, and that's what it's all about. And, but in the end, what it does, it develops a better relationship between the private sector and the government sector. Both the operations side of government and policymakers. Both the operations side of government and policymakers such as yourself. About where to set up, it's just a matter of getting people that will be willing to to commit to six meetings over the next year. And then after that, if you want to continue, we we would appoint uh fourteen more. And uh nobody gets burnt out, except for maybe you guys could come to the meeting, but uh it's a. It it works, and to me, any communication is good communication. But you have, uh in the beginning, you have to be willing to to listen because pretty soon they're going to tell you what uh what's wrong with this. You know.
Can I ask one question? Each meeting, each round table discussion, each director would bring two businesses to the table. Then the next meeting would be two different, I'm gonna keep the same.
Let's just say you uh you give us two names. And we'll contact those in the, well, we would hope that you would contact them ahead of time because.
Yeah.
You can give us the name, then we will, we we would invite them. So you potentially, you would have all fourteen members, Derek, along with yourself at the meeting, each meeting.
Each meeting, for a year.
For a year.
Yes, yes. So fourteen businesses, we would meet with every other month to discuss what other.
That's correct.
The grapes, the praises.
Yeah, this 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 business. Yeah. And you know, and it's also another opportunity for them to 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 look at government in a different way as well. I know that their their focus is business. But you know, uh. Or making some investments in recreation, they may have some family member, you know, want to know about that. It gets them out of their their pigeonhole and looking at the community broadly as opposed to. You know, we typically invite the superintendent of schools uh to come to one of those meetings. So that uh what's a he can give a a a broad level of of what public education is new. Those are the future employees of those folks that that are sitting around the table for you. So. It works, it works.
I think we would be good, you know, not just business owners, but like the managers or the directors of some of these larger. Maybe a southern states tractor supply food line, is there anyone's hiring workforce?
Well, normally you uh. You invite the business and whoever the business wants to send, that's fine. And if they say, well, can we bring two? I don't know if that's a problem, you know, most of the time they only bring themselves, but. Uh you let the business choose who they, who who's running the things that's important to them. Everybody has the finance manager of the business, you know, because of the the taxes. And all that people and all the things that go into it, so. I think what you said, first couple of meetings, you'll be very pleased that you uh that you decided to do it. But the key is to is to find two, two solid people that's uh are willing to at least commit to. Gosh, four out of the six, I hope, you know, we all know that can't that hundred percent, but uh that's one. Because their absence means that there's somebody else we could have asked.
Yeah.
That's not it.
Yeah, you want them to make a commitment.
Yeah.
You don't want to come to the first meeting and not see them.
That's right.
Then that looks bad.
That's right.
I would be willing to help steer that this, if, you know, I communicated with the group, we got our our fourteen businesses. And then we'll just work with everybody, but I guess I'll 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 forge on it.
Good, appreciate that, absolutely.
Maybe by September, we can maybe have our first. So that would give us August, to get all the names, get the invites, then September.
Good thing, sure. Like the day of the week, you would feel more comfortable to meeting and 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 what kind you want it as a as a. I wouldn't think you want a breakfast meeting, but uh if you want a luncheon, a lunch meeting or a dinner or a.
Unless you make some breakfasts.
A night meeting. The night meeting probably would not be a meal associated with it. But the I I would think lunch, you would almost have to because they are interrupting their day for that reason.
Then you want to keep it, maybe then you eat and then an hour of discussion and then.
Oh, yeah, the whole, the whole thing should not be more than ninety minutes unless they're really engaged and then it could last two hours. Nothing more than that, you know, twelve to two or or even eleven thirty to thirty probably is a good lunch uh lunch time, yes.
Then the county administration, you would, we would build a PowerPoint probably, and have you based your meetings off of a PowerPoint or just done it?
Sometimes, it depends on what we have, what we have to present. You know, the first one would be a more of a get to know, you know. Again, I don't know, these four probably don't know very many of these fourteen people you're about to what. Uh nominate Steve, Steve might know a few more than I do, but it's good that they start knowing who the faces are, you know, we have a planning. The planning director would probably be a uh a speaker at one of the meetings, and she can walk you, walk through the. Uh the way that the people apply and and then we'll have people that will that have been through that that will say, well, you know, I've been through that and this is what's wrong with it. And that's how you get better suggestions, you know. You just can't, you just get, have sensitivity, you gotta take, that's it, because there are going to be those that are saying, well. It it's been a long time, I've been waiting on you to to invite us because we got some things we want to tell you.
Yeah, that's all right, that's what you want to hear.
That's in a way you get better.
Right.
No question. So, but yeah, we could uh we could get started as soon as everybody uh submit your name, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, so uh you need a motion, right? I think this is.
The motion would be to create, to create the business round table. Uh with a with two members, uh each from representing each of the uh of the E D A member. And uh. And out of courtesy, I probably, we probably should ask the board supervisors to attend. I I don't know how they ever would, but if they if they choose to, uh they 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 would be an audience to listen, just like you are.
I would think that I do need, I think we will need a motion, but I would like to maybe talk a little bit more generally about the idea of lunch versus dinner. And maybe a real bit of that format around the first meeting, so we could be guided going. I think that the idea of having more of a get to know you, but also the opportunity to, you know, to talk about the commitment, like the six, also five additional meetings. If there are people that we think that would add value, like the finance director or the treasurer, the planning director, whoever. Maybe propose, we we propose to have these people come in at meeting one, three, and five. And these two additional meetings, we could do any number of these other things. What would you like us to have some kind of back and forth around what would add the most value to those businesses?
It's wide open to however you you watch it unfold, it's wide open.
And so most of that first conversation is introductions, goals.
Yeah.
Understanding, feedback, and then kind of setting the course for the rest of the year.
So it it seems to me that in this environment, it might be easier to have evening meetings. Right, just you just think about people, jobs and work, it's a big county and just get here. And so I would think the evening meetings would be a little easier.
Certainly easier. I was kind of making lunch myself because I, you know, that way you won't drag home, you know, because at a time table, they come to lunch and then they go back to work. But either just fine, I mean.
So.
Either way.
And the other consideration is, I I know that some of the folks that we'll be inviting. Um, you know, they they may be working on cars or something, right? And so it just, it it's just easier, it just may be better for everybody to be able to own the change and.
Could we still, I mean, I think I would tend to agree with the timing, but I also think that there's a lot of value in setting up a good, pretty much. And so is there any way to? Well, I mean. Orders or?
I would say if like if it's a, maybe not have a full, full meal, but we can always figure out some. Some sort of some kind of right stuff. So, yeah, I'm not, you know, and the other thing about, if we're talking about fourteen, let's just say uh fourteen people. Yourself would be almost twenty, if you have any guests at all. You may end up with twenty-three, twenty-four people, we're going to have to have another venue, we we won't be able to be here. We don't have, we don't have the space, even if we put all these tables together and we were.
What facility?
We were brainstorming that a little bit ago, the work and the work and building might be an option for us. Yes, the Parks and Recreation uh uh Center, you know, but A L A is also another option, it's bigger than I think we have tables, but. Or or we don't have to have the same place, we can meet, maybe the work pavilion would be three times, we need to meet at the Parks and Rec Center three times.
Or any of the businesses that want to.
Well, that's true, you might have that opportunity.
Sure. So there there's, there is something to be said about repetition, like having, having, having it on on a certain day, you know, every other, right? Just and and having it at the same place, it just, you'll sooner or later, you're going to end up with somebody in the wrong place and for just.
I agree, yeah. I would probably recommend lunch in the afternoon, just because these are county-based businesses. I guess it may be two, two and a half hours out of the day, but at the end of the day, they've just worked the whole day. They have kids, school would have just started if they had some age against. I think, and it also won't lead to. I don't, if we have a night people, we're sticking around until seven o'clock at night, which is good.
It can begin in and out, have a lunch, lunch. May or.
If we were to take a vote, my my recommendation would be lunch unless the group that we promote says otherwise.
What do you think that would be the answer?
We definitely also would be marketing with the staff.
Well, we have night meetings.
Almost every night.
I understand, but now we want to make this work a little bit.
We will have to recognize that 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 those of us who do work outside accounting may not be able to turn every time.
Yeah.
And as long as we have, I think as long as we have a sufficient number of us who are able to represent.
We'll go with lunch.
I already spoke about that, but I mean, whatever we decide to do, you know.
Well, again, the people you choose. They need to, they need to buy into that, and if it comes back, you you can run into a rip law for lunch. But the night was more accessible to them than that to be communicated. To the, maybe you switch gears before we make the appointment. Because that could very well happen.
I think that's, I think that is a really good, it, I think we polled people for, I mean, I I know the folks that I'm thinking about, I mean, it's like, you know. They're working, I mean, they're working.
So then maybe the first step then is is um for us to to source names from the from the the list. Um you get the McKennie and the administration, and maybe the first move is to send an invitation that both indicates what we're up to, what we're trying to do. And then request their participation and feedback on the best meeting that, lunch or evening.
I'm thinking around October, maybe November, because. August, and he was just saying September, but. Well, have, you go through first, two people say, no, I don't, then you guys start digging for two, I mean, it may take some time to get there. I don't think it's going to be as easy as what you'd think to get the fourteen people, maybe, but who knows? It may happen in two days and it may take two weeks.
I think people will be ecstatic to have a platform to communicate, they, you know, I I really do, but we don't do enough of it.
And I can do, I can create anybody, plus we'd want to create one, or I can send an idea out to the group.
I think we want, and not to say that you're not official, you're a member of the authority, but I think sending something on a county domain address has a level of. I mean.
Exactly, I I would say that would be on behalf of the members of the Economic Development Authority. And uh you're being asked, I guess, would be to do one, two ways. You could, you could secure your nomination that they're going to do it. The letter would actually just be a letter of invite to our first meeting. I'd rather do it that way than a letter of invitation and get back to me if you're interested. I would hope the two that names that you have are two that have agreed to do it. And of course, we need to choose uh what day of the week and what week of the month that you want to do. You know, when you're standing meeting then. I would think you would want to like tell at least two weeks. Uh before you have to come back out for a separate meeting that month, so. Uh that might be just a suggestion, but not necessarily, if you want to keep Wednesdays. That's a good, Wednesdays or Thursdays, I think are better, are better dates for accounting uh staff.
So then would we want to, given Mr. Hardwick's point, I think verged into what you just said. Could we then spend the next month as E D A members sourcing two business leaders? Come together at our next meeting with people who hopefully have agreed the circuit. So that that list can then go to the administration and then we'll invite Kenny. Take lead on developing an agenda for the first meeting, kind of hammering down, looking at the calendar dates, and then we can look at all that. Stamp it. And and just move to get an invitation out with the invitation and the question about lunchtime. Lunchtime evening.
I will say typically, we start these in uh in February, but I, this is a little off loan, you for me, that's okay, starting to have a lot. Well, I always let uh let January simmer because of the Christmas holiday. And then we just did February, April, uh June, August, and uh. And February, then you were done, you're running to Christmas or anything like that. And that's why I think six of them.
And it makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, because we get a late start.
Right.
So we probably look at that October, then you got the holidays coming up between November or Christmas holidays, so I think that's a great idea.
So what if our initial round table was actually a seven meeting? Like we started in November with our introductory, get to know you, and then we have all of the next year's new, the new round.
Could do that, sure, yeah. And uh there's no, there's no set format, I just always chose the eligible, like because it just. You avoided some of them and, you know, and obviously, the weakest attendance always came at the at the summer meeting. We still had good, you know, still had participation, but that was the weakest. The rest of it, we always forget. For the better, that always helps.
So if there's open to lunch, that means hamburgers on those, Chris, the pantry, and Steve can have hot dogs ready when they get here.
Ron, Ron's makes a good hamburger.
So Chris has good thoughts.
The parlor, the parlor's advertising, I mean, we're, we're freaking sick of that.
So, I I think general outline of of I think the consensus and maybe that we can look at a function, it's uh. The general parameters of of this round table, say perhaps seven, depending on timeline, meetings to bridge the holidays. Uh Kenny's offered to kind of take a lead, you know, from the authority on making sure that things move forward and go smoothly. We're each being asked to to come to our next meeting in August with two names of people so that we can then move forward to. Uh formal invitation and nailing down a new time and date with those people. Um and then we can really get to work on setting generally, is that?
And we're going to ask the two people their preference, if the if the noon or evening.
Or evening.
We need a cross-section, then the two people we ask. I mean, we we need a cross-section, small business, large business.
I mean, we we need a cross section, small business, large business, so. I mean, I, you know, we might come back with six, eight, uh fourteen things that uh. I'm I'm trying to think of a process, who would I approach? And I wanna approach a large business, small business. We all approach small businesses.
You see what I'm getting at? I do, and it's what I tell you how I'm gonna look at it is I'm gonna sit down, I'm gonna look at the list and and just think about. Who who do I think can can provide us with the most useful input to advance our cause? Right? And and I think we all just kind of look at it that way, not not somebody, you know, you know, your next door neighbor who's a good friend, right? But just who can really help us advance what we're trying to do? We should come up with some good names.
I can build an Excel file, they said, and send it out, then like when I get my two all have on it, so we don't have to double up, trip to up. And I could even have a column for maybe business, you know, just so we know. Are they in the construction with food and this service and this like. So I can see alternative, maybe this is a point of discussion, do we wanna come next month having asked our two businesses? Or we wanna come next month with our two businesses so that we make sure that. I in my experience going up spreadsheets in in between meetings is not a not a successful method. So I can, you know, I can keep up with everyone. Okay. So you can you can get some people and give it to you. That's gonna be our channel. I get everyone's cell phone. You'll check this. It's been one of the easier tasks. Hey, the farmer's market is amazing. Alright, well then I think if if that's a sufficient summary of what kind of next steps, then we'll find our businesses. Kenny will keep up with us, cross-reference everyone, make sure that I'm not asking the same people that Gina is asking. And we'll come hopefully next month with people who've agreed to participate and then we can move forward with invitations. Nailing down meeting dates types. So with that consensus, can we have a motion to just.
I I have a lot of questions.
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh so I'm looking at the list now and the list you sent of people that have business licenses in Kingland County. And there's a ton on here. That has. You know, Richland, McLaughlin, this one Glenn Allen, Providence, Fortridge, Dunsfield. So. None of them I can figure out, we can sort it all by.
Yeah.
If they, I always look by uh Mr. Hardaway, their physical address.
Yeah, that's on.
But you know, they they could be based, they could have a home base, but that's.
Yeah.
That's always the taxing sounds, but with the mission of revenue, if they have a physical address in the county.
Right.
Then.
And I would be, that's the reason I said.
That then I think would be, was I would call it eligible, I think that would be the kind of. Kind of people that you want.
I just wasn't thinking, it's in Excel so you can sort it.
Sure. I think Commerce Park is a new example, and we have several who are home based somewhere else, but they they do have. Physical facilities, their employees work there, so they're they're function, but. Taxes don't always stay. They stay. So I guess, oh, yeah, no, just the other.
There was a motion to officialize or memorialize our discussion.
So so I'll make a motion that we uh establish a roundtable that we bring back. Uh two names that committed to participate and um we're gonna poll as to whether whether dinner. Uh or or lunch works better for them and um. And I think that's it, right? So that that gets it done, but Kenny's gonna take the lead on on the program.
Or the same discussion. Let's call the group this time.
Mr. Hardaway. Mr. Holdery.
Hi.
Mr. Campbell.
Hi.
Ms. Williams, hi. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Chairman Brown.
Hi.
Thank you all. So I think with that, we have a next somebody agenda that is is new business. I'm not sure if there's any new business we discussed, I mean, during the agenda. So I would like to move directly on to our next meeting, which is August the. The ninth. Seven P M. right here. And with that, um. Do you have the, I don't have the.
I answered this out, can I speak to this? Now, okay, alright, I, yeah, we mentioned last time, but. You know, Ratmanak Lekker does have a department of economic development, work with businesses that. Wanna move into our area, and we have a director, she's very knowledgeable, she's doing a great job attracting businesses in in. Certain areas of my territory, but this is a brochure for each of you to look at. And she is willing to come down and talk to us if we so desire.
When she comes out to our recruiting committee?
Yeah, but anyway, she's available, she. So I just wanna let y'all know that and anytime we'd like to have her come down, she'd be glad to do it. So look at the brochure.
I think there's certainly a lot of synergies between these efforts and what what we're certainly looking at, so appreciate that. Information. Okay, someday we'll have a packet like this on Kingland County.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, indeed. Chris, can you provide us the words that we need to say to get the votes?
Yeah. Um, need a motion to meet in coach meeting to consider. In accordance with section two point two thirty-seven eleven eighty-five of the code of Virginia. To discuss a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made.
Any discussion?
Mr. Holdery.
Hi.
Mr. Campbell.
Hi.
Ms. Williams, hi. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway. Chairman Brown.
Hi.
You said that word.
I'm sorry.
You threw the motion for the.
Um just need a motion to reconvene in an open meeting.
Have a motion, do you need an opening?
Mr. Holdery.
Hi.
Mr. Campbell.
Hi.
Ms. Williams, uh Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Hardaway. Chairman Brown.
Hi, now we need to certify.
Need S R one, yes.
Have a motion certified according to S R one. So that's like, any discussion? Please call the.
Mr. Holdery.
Hi.
Ms. Campbell. Ms. Williams. Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Hardaway. Chairman Brown.
Alright, and we already reviewed the previous meeting dates, so the only thing left for tonight, unless there's anything else you wanna do to agree.
Can I add one more question? Rumors are flying in the corner of that three sixty third. What is going on? It's still coming, right? That's what.
Well, what's throwing everything off is that uh. The development that's going in puts signs up along the properties they owned, uh along three sixty property available. Made it look like they were already flipping property as opposed to developing it, but they're just looking for outparcelled property.
Right, right.
And they did the same thing with Wawa's, just as a the call, not for that parcel, but. You know, just for general information, like a building.
Right, I'm, that's what I.
Put a sign up to say, okay, merchant property was stamped.
Yeah. But uh we're uh. We anticipate their plans being submitted. Uh these thirty days, still more out, but I really feel like moving within thirty days.
So I hear that we are deputized to go and quell the rumors, Wawa's on the way.
Yes. With that, I have a motion, I have a second.
And Starbucks's uh planes have been suspended, so therefore we.
We can all have our pink drinks.
I think I have a motion in a second. Did I get that?
No.
I have a motion, I have a second, so. Any opposed? With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.